Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this morning. But before we begin the council session, I would like to make a couple of announcements. Due to the continuing threat to the public health from COVID-19 and the Delta variant, city council is currently meeting remotely. We are using Microsoft Teams to make this remote meeting possible. Instructions for how the public may view the meeting and offer public comment are included in the stated meeting notice that was published in the Daily News, Inquirer, and the Legal Intelligence prior to the meeting, and can also be found on PHLCouncil.com. A now note that the hour has come. The clerk will please call a roll to take attendance. And members that are in attendance, just say a couple of words in addition to present, to ensure that your image is displayed on the screen. Mr. Decker, please call a roll.
Councilwoman Bass?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in the city of Philadelphia.
Good morning on this very special day, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues in Philadelphia. I am present.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Dom?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. I'm here.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gattie?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues in Philadelphia. Present.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning, Philadelphia.
Good morning.
Councilman Green?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and good morning to the city of brotherly love and sisterly effectiveness.
Good morning.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Good morning, Council President, and good morning to my council colleagues. Looking forward to today.
Good morning.
Councilman Johnson?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Just sending out prayers to all the families who have lost their loved ones to senseless gun violence.
Good morning.
Councilman Jones?
Good morning, Mr. President. Good morning, colleagues. And to the birthday person, happy birthday, Member Bass.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues, and happy birthday, Councilmember Bash.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman O'Neil?
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilwoman Parker?
Good morning, Mr. President, colleagues in Philadelphia.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilwoman Kenone Sanchez?
Good morning, Council President and colleagues. Felicidades to the birthday girl.
Good morning, Councilwoman.
Councilman Scola?
Good morning, Council President, colleagues. Happy birthday, Councilmember Bass.
Good morning, Councilman.
Councilman Thomas?
Good morning, Council President. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning to the listening public and, like many others, happy birthday to Councilmember Bass.
Good morning, Council.
Council President Clark?
And good morning to all. We have freely established a court. We're now going to come to order. To give our invocation this morning, the chair recognizes Elder Morris Singleton of the Victory Community Baptist Church. He is here today as the guest of Councilwoman Bass. I would ask all members and guests to please bow your heads for the invocation. Elder?
God, we thank you, Lord, for today. We thank you, Lord, for this time as we are coming together, together on one accord. God, I ask you to bless the city of Philadelphia. I ask you, Lord, to touch every person that has been impacted by the senseless gun violence. I ask you to touch every family member that has been impacted even by COVID-19. God, I ask you, in the name of Jesus, that you will continue on touching everyone that's on this line on today, thus every council person. I ask you to allow us to be on one accord, allow good agendas to come forth, allow collaborative efforts to come forth. Give you the glory, the honor, and the praise. God, we thank you, Lord, for this time, and we thank you for life. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Elder. We really appreciate you being here for the invocation today. Thank you. God bless.
God bless.
And our next order of business is the approval of the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 28, 2021. And the chair recognizes Councilman Scola.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that Journal of the Meeting on Thursday, October 28, be approved.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded at the Journal of the Meeting of Thursday, October 28, 2021. Stand and approve, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, and our journal is approved. And our next order of business is request for leave of absence. And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of the members of council, a leave of absence is requested for Councilmember Heen.
Chair, thanks to Councilwoman. Leave shall be granted for Councilman Heen. And the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for motion concerning certain legislative matters that may arise during the course of today's council session that were not listed on the calendar circulated prior to today's session. Councilwoman Parker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that any of the following matters, if considered today, may be added to the agenda for this session of council and, as required by law, subsequently published on an amended agenda after the consideration of those matters: Resolutions authorizing hearings, amendments to bills on first reading, the reconsideration of a bill vetoed by or recalled from the mayor, resolutions taking substantive action to be voted on in this session, a motion to withdraw a bill or resolution that is not on the calendar, and a motion placing a bill or resolution on or returning a bill or resolution from the suspension calendar that is not listed on today's calendar. The purpose of this motion is to provide the public with notice concerning possible actions by council that arose too late to be included on the calendar that was published prior to today's session.
Second. Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the legislative matters stated by Councilwoman Parker may be added to the agenda for today. Should those matters arise during the course of this session of council, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Good aye. Ayes have it, and a motion carries. And our next order of business is communication. And the chair asks the clerk, please read the messages from the mayor and any other communication that he may have in his possession.
From the mayor to the president and members of the council of the city of Philadelphia, I am transmitting for the consideration of your honorable body a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple Title II, 303 through 07 West Burke Street and 1925 North Fifth Street in the 7th Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Our next order of business is the introduction of bills and resolutions. And by way of a reminder, we are asking that all resolutions, including privileged resolutions, be placed on the final passage calendar in the next session of council unless they are being referred to committee. In our current remote environment, this procedure will provide the appropriate opportunity for the public comment. I want to thank you very much in advance for your anticipated cooperation. Mr. Decker, please read the titles of the legislation that's being offered today by our members.
Yes, Mr. President. Councilwoman Parker offers one resolution entitled a resolution declaring each Friday in December of 2021 as Shop Black Business Friday in the city of Philadelphia.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson offers one resolution entitled a resolution recognizing November 15 through November 21, 2021 as National Apprenticeship Week and honoring apprenticeship PHL for its continued commitment to connecting Philadelphians to family-supporting careers.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Gimm offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring and recognizing Stephen F. Gold Esquire for his path-breaking achievements in civil rights litigation, which have advanced the movement for disability rights and helped countless people to live with dignity and independence, as well as for his tireless and passionate support for social justice.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Jones offers one bill entitled an ordinance amending Chapter 14, 1,000 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Historic Preservation to establish a temporary demolition moratorium with respect to properties in the area bounded by Henry Avenue, Roxborough Avenue, Silverwood Street, and Fountain Street.
They refer to committee?
Councilwoman Sanchez offers two bills and two resolutions. Entitled, on behalf of the administration and ordinance, authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2021 from the general fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the grants revenue fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the water fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the aviation fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; to the general fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the water fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the aviation fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
For the committee?
Also, on behalf of the administration and ordinance, authorizing transfers and appropriations for fiscal year 2022 from the general fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the water fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the grants revenue fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; the general fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions; and the water fund, certain all city offices, departments, boards, and commissions.
For the committee?
And on her own behalf, a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple Title II, 303 through 07 West Burke Street and 1925 North Fifth Street located in the 7th Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2003 North Orkney Street, 2039 East Fletcher Street, and 202913 North Orkney Street located in the 7th Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple Title II, 167 East Lippincott Street, 508 East Cambria Street, and 3217 Shelbourne Street in the 7th Councilmatic District.
Next week's calendar?
Councilman Dom offers two resolutions entitled a resolution recognizing the week of November 8, 2021 as Global Apprenticeship Entrepreneurship Week and celebrating the small business community and the impact of the entrepreneurial spirit on Philadelphia's economy.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution honoring Villanova University basketball coach Jay Wright upon his induction into the Naismith Memorial Basketball Hall of Fame and his many contributions to the Philadelphia region's dynamic sports scene.
Next week's calendar?
Councilwoman Bass offers two bills and three resolutions. On behalf of Council President Clark, an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled God Philadelphia Building, Construction, and Occupancy Code by amending Subcode A, the Philadelphia Administrative Code, and Subcode BM, the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, and other related sections of the Philadelphia Code to add provisions related to the abatement of rats and other vermin in the city of Philadelphia.
For the committee?
And on her own behalf, an ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Zoning and Planning by amending Section 14, 303, Subparagraph 15 to convey standing upon district council members to file appeals to the courts.
For the committee?
And a resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings to determine the feasibility of providing financial and/or legal assistance to disadvantaged registered community organizations that seek to appeal a zoning board of adjustment decision.
Mr. Decker, was that a resolution?
It's authorizing a hearing. Yes, Mr. President.
Thank you. That was in this week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing city council to retain legal counsel to file a lawsuit to require the administration to implement and enforce Bill Number 200425, an ordinance duly enacted by the City Council of Philadelphia, which became law on January 28, 2021.
Next week's calendar?
And a resolution authorizing council's Special Committee on Child Separations in Philadelphia to conduct public hearings to further understand the role of community umbrella agencies, such as Turning Points for Children in the local child welfare system, and further investigate the systemic failures that resulted in three girls being returned to their sexually abusive father.
This week's calendar?
Councilman O offers one resolution entitled a resolution honoring, recognizing, and celebrating William W. Bodine High School for International Affairs on the occasion of its 40th anniversary.
Next week's calendar?
There are no other bills or resolutions being offered today by the members, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. There being no recourse from committee, our next order of business is consideration of the count. And, Mr. Decker, will you please read the bill on the first reading calendar today?
Bill Number 210778 entitled an ordinance to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14, 532, entitled the AHP Affordable Housing Preservation Overlay District, and making other related changes to amend the Philadelphia zoning mask by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 39th Street, Ludlow Street, 40th Street, and Market Street, and to establish a temporary demolition moratorium with respect to properties within the aforementioned area.
Chair agrees, and the chair recognizes Councilwoman Gattie at this time for a motion regarding Bills Number 210778.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended so as to permit an amendment to be offered at this time to my Bill Number 210778, which is printed on today's first reading calendar and just had its first reading.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and again, the chair again recognizes Councilwoman Gattie.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to offer an amendment to Bill Number 210778. A copy of the amendment has been circulated to all members of council. I move for the adoption of the amendment.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and Bill Number 210778 has been amended. Bill Number 210778 as amended will be placed on the final passage calendar at our next session of council. As there are no additional bills on the first reading calendar, the chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker. Full motion concerning the resolution on the final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the following resolutions on the final passage calendar. They are resolution numbers 210871, 210872, 210873, 210874, 210875, 210876, 210878, 210879, 210882, 210883, 210884, 210885, 210886, 210887, and 210888.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and properly seconded that the rules of council be suspended to permit the use of a consent agenda to consider the resolution just read by Councilwoman Parker. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. We will consider the resolution consent agenda shortly. Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Parker for the purpose of calling up bills and resolutions on the regular second reading and final passage calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition to the resolutions being considered on the consent agenda, the following resolutions and bills are being called up from the second reading and final passage calendars today. They are numbers 210877, 210880, 210549, 210634, 210637, 210638, 210667, 210668, 210687, 210742, and 210632. All other bills and resolutions are being held, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we proceed with the consideration of our public comment session at this time, we're actually going to take about a minute recess to give our technology professionals some time to connect the speakers we have for today, today's meeting. Let's take a brief, very brief break. Thank you. We do not have any speakers for public comment today, but I do want to go through the process of giving you the information for those that may want to connect for public comment on any bill or resolution that will be passing. So our public comment must concern matters of the second reading and final passage calendars for possible action at a session of council. A speaker on any of those matters must sign up in order to testify. You must call 215-686-3406 by 3:00 p.m. the day before the session to sign up for public comment. When you call, we'll take your name, phone number, the number of the legislative item you are commenting on, and whether you are in support of or against the legislation, and add your name to the list. When we tell them, we will then telephone these persons on the list during the council session and invite them to our remote meeting. Based on the circumstances, in terms of the volume of individuals, you will get three minutes or conceivably less than three minutes, but that will be determined at that time. So I wanted to just let you know, when you do call and you're testifying, we're going to hold people faithfully to their time limit. When you give your testimony at that particular time, it will be a clock started, and when it's 30 seconds remaining on your time, you will be reminded of that, and when your time expires, you will be muted and disengaged from our council session. So I want to thank you very much for your future participation. We'll move on to our next subject matter. We will now consider today's resolution consent agenda. I would ask, Mr. Decker, please read the titles of all the resolutions on the consent agenda. After each title is read, any member may object to the inclusion of the resolution on the resolution consent agenda. Upon such an objection, without debate, the resolution will be immediately removed from the resolution consent agenda and placed on today's regular final passage calendar. Mr. Decker, we please read the titles of the resolutions on today's consent agenda.
Resolution Number 210871 entitled a resolution celebrating the Diamond Jubilee 75th anniversary of The Links Incorporated. And Resolution Number 210872 entitled a resolution honoring the Oak Lane Youth Association on the special occasion of its 50th anniversary. And Resolution Number 210873 entitled a resolution congratulating Sonia Sanchez on winning the Dorothy and Lilian Gish Prize, one of the country's most prestigious and generous arts honors. And Resolution Number 210874 entitled a resolution also naming the 2,400 block of West Indiana Avenue as Reverend Dr. A.W. Doc Way in honor of Reverend Dr. Albert Wilson Doc to commemorate his legacy as a preacher, teacher, and evangelist. And Resolution Number 210875 entitled a resolution also naming the 4,300 block of Tower Street as Josie D. Hurd, A.M.E.C. Way in honor of Josie D. Hurd to commemorate her legacy as an educator, author, gymnast, and as the namesake of the Josie D. Hurd African Methodist Episcopal Church in the Maniok neighborhood of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210876 entitled a resolution authorizing the commissioner of public property to execute and deliver to the Philadelphia Redevelopment Authority, deeds conveying fee simple Title II, 3119 North 35th Street in the 4th Councilmatic District of the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210878 entitled a resolution recognizing November as Epilepsy Awareness Month. And Resolution Number 210879 entitled a resolution recognizing and celebrating Women's Community Revitalization Project on the 35th anniversary of the organization's incorporation. And Resolution Number 210882 entitled a resolution honoring and congratulating Philadelphia native Aliyah Cooper as the champion of the week for being named WNBA Finals MVP and winning the WNBA title. And Resolution Number 210883 entitled a resolution authorizing the Philadelphia Land Bank to dispose of 2505 Emerald Street located in the 1st Councilmatic District. And Resolution Number 210884 entitled a resolution honoring the life and legacy of Colin L. Powell for his exemplary and outstanding service to the United States as a trailblazing military general, statesman, and public servant. And Resolution Number 210885 entitled a resolution recognizing October 2021 as Down Syndrome Awareness Month in the city of Philadelphia. And Resolution Number 210886 entitled a resolution designating October 1 as Latin American Entrepreneur Day in recognition of the successful Latin America Thrives in Philadelphia event. And Resolution Number 210887 entitled a resolution recognizing, congratulating, and thanking the United States Marine Corps on the occasion of its 246th anniversary. And Resolution Number 210888 entitled a resolution recognizing the Ukrainian Federation of America on the occasion of its 30th anniversary. You're muted, Mr. President.
Sorry about that. The chair now recognizes Councilwoman Parker for a motion to adopt each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda today.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move the adoption of each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda.
Second.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded that each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda be adopted. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and each of the resolutions on the resolution consent agenda has been adopted. We will now consider the bills and resolution on the regular second reading and final passage calendar. I would ask, Mr. Decker, to please read the title of Resolution Number 210877.
A resolution appointing Maria Gonzalez to the Board of Directors of the Philadelphia Land Bank.
And the chair recognizes Councilwoman Winona Sanchez.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for its adoption.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries, and resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Resolution Number 210880.
A resolution memorializing and honoring the life of the late Walter Wallace Jr. and recognizing the adoption of police reforms inspired by his death and the activism in his name.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gattie for a motion.
President, I move for the adoption of the resolution and also wanted to thank you for your leadership on this issue.
Second.
It has been moved and properly seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted. Mr. Decker, please read the title of Bill Number 210549.
An ordinance approving an amendment to the Articles of Incorporation of the City Avenue Special Services District of Philadelphia and Laurel Marion to extend the term of existence of the district to December 31, 2042.
Still haven't been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling a roll?
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gattie? Councilwoman Gattie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker? Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, nays are 0. Majority of all members present have been voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210634.
An ordinance to amend the master plan for the University of Pennsylvania by areas of land located within an area bounded by Guardian Drive, East Service Drive, Civic Center Boulevard, 34th Street, 33rd Street, Walnut Street, the Scoco River 34th Street, and University Avenue.
Thank you. This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, please read the title of 210637.
An ordinance amending Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code entitled zoning and planning by amending certain provisions of Chapter 14, 800, entitled parking and loading pertaining to parking requirements for uses in historically designated properties.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210638.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by 11th Street, Reed Street, 12th Street, and Wharton Street to amend Title 14 of the Philadelphia Code by adding Section 14531 entitled SMH South Philadelphia Municipal Hub Overlay District and making other related changes and approving the residential mixed use to District RMX2 master plan for the site generally bounded by 11th Street, Reed Street, 12th Street, and Wharton Street.
Thank you. This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210667.
An ordinance amending Section 14529 of the Philadelphia Code entitled BDO 5th District Overlay District to prohibit certain bonuses.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210668.
An ordinance amending Section 14504 of the Philadelphia Code entitled NCO Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District by expanding the existing Strawberry Mansion NCO area to include an area bounded by Lehigh Avenue, 29th Street, and Sedgley Avenue.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210687.
An ordinance to amend the Philadelphia zoning maps by changing the zoning designations of certain areas of land located within an area bounded by Trenton Avenue, Cambria Street, Tulip Street, and William Street.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question now is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, 210742.
An ordinance amending Section 14502 of the Philadelphia Code entitled CTR Center City Overlay District by amending certain height regulations and creating bulk and massing controls within the Benjamin Franklin Parkway area.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Abstain.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 15, and nays are 0, and that'd be recorded at one abstention by Councilman Dom. Mr. Decker, 210632.
An ordinance amending Chapter 17, 1600 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Economic Opportunity Plans by establishing new definitions and clarifying the manner in which credit is given for MWDSBE participation.
This bill hadn't been read on two different days. The question is, shall the bill pass finally? Mr. Decker calling the rule.
Councilwoman Bass?
Aye.
Councilwoman Brooks?
Aye.
Councilman Dom?
Aye.
Councilwoman Cartier?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson?
Aye.
Councilman Green?
Aye.
Councilwoman Gimm?
Aye.
Councilman Heenan? Councilman Johnson?
Aye.
Councilman Jones?
Aye.
Councilman O?
Aye.
Councilman O'Neil?
Aye.
Councilwoman Parker?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kenona Sanchez?
Aye.
Councilman Squilla?
Aye.
Councilman Thomas?
Aye.
That's President Clark.
Aye. The ayes are 16, and nays are 0. Majority of all members present voting in affirmative. The bill passes. Mr. Decker, you have any additional resolution?
A resolution authorizing the Committee on Finance to hold hearings to determine the feasibility of providing financial and/or legal assistance to disadvantaged registered community organizations that seek to appeal a zoning board of adjustments decision introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move for the adoption of this resolution as we try to address some of the inequities that happen in this city on a regular basis around communities that don't have the resources to be able to fight back versus developers who have all of the resources. So the idea behind this piece of legislation is to level the playing field, and with that, I'll call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all those who favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Resolution is adopted.
And a resolution authorizing Council's Special Committee on Child Separations in Philadelphia to conduct public hearings to further understand the role of community umbrella agencies, such as Turning Points for Children in the local child welfare system, and further investigate the systemic failures that resulted in three girls being returned to their sexually abusive father introduced by Councilwoman Bass.
Chair again recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, too, is a very important resolution that originated first from Councilman Kenyatta Johnson and then turned it over to our committee on special committee on child separation. I've been concerned about the role of KUAS community umbrella organizations here in the city of Philadelphia and their role regarding social work and child displacement in the city for a very long time. So I join with, I'm sure, all of my colleagues, particularly Councilman Kenyatta Johnson and absolutely Councilman David O., who really started this conversation. I call for the adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved in properly. Second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Ayes have it, and that resolution is adopted.
There are no other resolutions on the final passage calendar, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Decker. Prior to recognizing members for our speeches, I will note for the record at this time, we will use the chat feature available in Microsoft Teams to allow members to signify that they wish to be recognized. In order to comply with the Sunshine Act, the chat feature must only be used for this particular purpose. With that said, are there any speeches on behalf of the minority? Chair recognizes Councilman O.
Thank you very much, Council President. I guess I got three things. First, a happy birthday to our council colleague Cindy Bass. Second of all, I think all of us were very surprised. I certainly was when I read the article in The Inquirer about our council colleague and friend Maria Kenona Sanchez. And I had just met with her, and we had a very serious conversation. I never had any idea what she was going through in her bout with cancer and thankfully overcoming it and getting preventative treatment now. But definitely she is in our thoughts and prayers. But I was just amazed. She did not slow down in her advocacy and her hard work. That leads me to my third point, and that is to thank her as Appropriations Chair for her work in securing $500,000. And I know that was with the leadership of our council president. And I appreciate your taking the time to speak with me as well and your leadership on this. I just wanted to shout out the great work that the Managing Director's Office has done. In particular, of the nine mothers, I did highlight one and posted a photograph actually of a bullet hole in her steel lamppost in front of her house. And I'm proud to say that, I'm relieved and happy to say, but I'm proud to say that council stepped up. Council has come up with the funds. This woman and her two children were moved. They are moved to safety. And now, thanks to funding, this will go from temporary types of relocation, which is just short stays in hotels, to something more significant and lengthy that will assure her and others like her[1563.72] That will assure her and others like her that this city does care about them and their lives. The managing director's office and of course, I want to thank council members Curtis Jones Junior and Kenyatta Johnson for getting right on it, organizing phone calls, doing all those type of things. But to this body, fantastic work, very quick, very quick turnaround time. And I'd like everyone who's been concerned about this problem to know that the mayor, his administration, council president, this council body has stepped up to answer this call. And we will be working with the police, with the sheriff, with the managing director's office to ensure that people know that they will not be abandoned by this city. When we continue to fight against senseless gun violence and murder, thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilman. Speech is on behalf of the majority, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President, I want to echo the words of Councilmember O regarding the work that he's been doing and also his comments regarding our colleague, Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez. Just reading today's paper in the comment sections in the Inquirer, some responded that in response to her very personal story that motivated her to get a mammography. So I'm sure there are countless women in the city and around the region who have been moved and you know, it's probably countless lives have been saved by her courage in sharing that very personal story. I also just want to remind my colleagues regarding today's briefing at twelve o'clock with Philly Counts. As we all know, Philly Counts did yeoman's work in reference to the census. And as they were wrapping up their work in trying to get everyone in the city of Philadelphia counted as part of the census, they moved into working on vaccination works and trying to increase vaccinations around the city of Philadelphia. And they're still working on that issue. So today at twelve o'clock, representatives from Philly Counts will be in a Microsoft Teams meeting for council and staff to learn about what they are doing and how they can partner with all of our offices to make sure we're getting everyone vaccinated. It's especially important now as we're going into the late fall and winter season and we're more likely going to be in close quarters indoors. And that's when the variant and the virus has spread the most during this pandemic. So once again, today at twelve o'clock, I hope all of my colleagues and their staff will be able to participate in today's briefing with Philly Counts about the works that they are doing regarding vaccination. And how we can end this pandemic through our work collectively in the city of Philadelphia, thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Thomas.
Thank you, Council President, and I just, two quick things, the first thing is, I want to thank my colleagues for passing the resolution in support of recognizing and honoring WNBA Finals MVP, Ms. Copper. Who I had an opportunity to talk with, who we're going to be celebrating and honoring on Monday at four P M at City Hall. So folks are available, please come outside Monday, four P M at City Hall, we're going to be honoring her. And I think the beautiful thing about it is the emphasis on inviting young people across the city of Philadelphia, specifically girls' basketball players. Because there's nothing like having a tangible example of somebody who looks like you, that comes from where you come from, that has accomplished their goal, it's inspiring and we look forward to celebrating on Monday at four P M. I also want to take a moment to thank my colleague, Councilmember Johnson, for his hearing this week, Special Committee on Gun Violence. I think that those hearings are always extremely informative, puts us in a position where we're analyzing what's going on as it relates to our city and our various departments and the stakeholders who's involved in this. As well as what we need to do to address one of the biggest atrocities that we have right now in the city of Philadelphia. And of course, echoing the sentiments of my colleagues, Councilmember O and Green, I did want to take a moment just to thank my colleague, Councilmember Sanchez, who a lot of folks don't know, have known me probably before I really knew myself. I've known Councilmember Sanchez almost forever, based on the work that I was doing in Frankfurt section of the city, as well as being a graduate of Frankfurt High School. She's always been somebody who I've respected, I've looked up to and to know that she was going through what she was going through and didn't miss a beat. Not only is it inspiring as it relates to her work ethic, her tenacity, her ability to move things forward, Councilmember talked about the appropriations committee. I also would echo the same sentiments for the education committee because I sit on both committees and I know how hard she works leading that process. And for that, for her not to miss a beat or anything, and then also being vulnerable and sharing her story with so many others to inspire. It's just amazing and it's a true testament to her character and to the type of leader she is. So thank you, Councilmember, I appreciate you, thank you, Council President, for allowing me the time and I look forward to continuing the great work.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. President, to my sister Maria, Bravo, your courage is an inspiration to us all. As we look at last Tuesday, one of the things that came through to me in the results, both locally and nationally, is that we have to address the pocketbook issues, real concerns of voters such as healthcare. If we do not, people make a disconnect with this political process and their daily lives. One other member that I want to draw attention to, former member, is Donna Reed Miller. If you have not seen her commercial, not commercial, but newscast, where she opened up to the fact that after her service in council, after passing the ban the box law, after passing many other laws. She struggles to get her insulin on a monthly basis. That the cost of that medication had risen from three hundred, I believe, to three thousand dollars a month. People in their fourth quarter of life should not be counting pills, cutting back on medication in order to have life sustaining drugs provided to them. We have to, on a national level, reconcile the negotiations with Big Pharma to be able to make affordable to particularly our seniors, life sustaining meds. And right here in our council, after five years, you're not eligible for healthcare is unacceptable. Some of my younger members may say, oh, well, that doesn't apply to me, I have decades to go before I reach that fourth quarter of life. Let me assure you, it goes by quicker than you think. And as she is, you will be as you are she once was, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman, it's so true, pretty amazing in the richest country in the nation that we even have to have these kind of conversations. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Gaultier.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just wanted to also take a moment to extend warm regards to our colleague, Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez on her recent health challenges. I'm praying for you, you know, to see a full return, to good health. And you know, every day I look at you as someone that is a shining example to women and girls in our city, particularly women and girls of color. But I think it's especially commendable that you shared such a personal health struggle in an effort to make sure that we check ourselves and make sure that we're okay. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Johnson.
Thank you, Council President, I just want to take a moment to acknowledge, I call her my big sis. I sit next to her in City Council, so she's been, I guess I could say, women mentoring me since I've come into this body. And just want to just acknowledge her as she go through this process, but she's a fighting Latina, you know, we all know she has big shoulders, kind of beat the party every time she comes down to, you know, put herself out there. And so on that same fighting spirit, I see as you go through this process and just want to just personally just say that we love you as a body. I appreciate you not only as my political comrade, but also a friend, and also just want to commend you for your encouragement. And actually empowering other black and brown girls and women to actually step up in this area and address the health areas around the breast cancer. And so I just wanted to personally just acknowledge you and just tell you, we love you, that's all, and continue to keep fighting the good fight, as we know you will, we know that spirit, and so God bless.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Catherine Gilmore Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. President, thank you so very much, and I would be remiss not to pause and acknowledge our colleague, Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez, who bravely shared her story publicly last week. And I know her strength in the face of adversity will undoubtedly change lives and push so many women to put themselves in their health first.
Mr. President, I have to say, as a freshman member of council, on so many occasions, I have leaned on Councilwoman Sanchez for advice and for counsel. And never knew all the while she was facing her own battle. People don't realize how difficult this work is. And I remember my former boss and her friend, B R B, saying, this is thankless work and can be very challenging. So I wanted to pause and say gracias to Maria Quinones Sanchez for your strength, and I thank you for everything you do for us as colleagues and what sharing your story will do for so many others, we love you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and I too want to shout out to Maria Quinones Sanchez, my good friend and council colleague. And you know, when I read the article, you know, I heard Councilwoman Gilmore Richardson getting a little choked up and emotional there. And you know, when I read the article, I cried and I immediately picked up the phone and called my sister, Councilwoman Maria Quinones Sanchez, because you know, I have love for the sister. We call ourselves the sisters from North Philly, one on the east side of Broad Street and one from the west side of Broad Street. And so I know she's a fighter and I know that this is, you know, listen, this is going to be just fine, she's going to beat anything because she's Maria Quinones Sanchez. And so we look forward to the celebration and the anniversaries afterwards, once this is way, way behind us, all of us in the rearview mirror. And I say us because I don't want you to feel like you're in it alone, you're in it with your family, you're in it with all of us as colleagues and friends, and we love you, so God bless. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Parker.
Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmember Maria Quinones Sanchez comes from good stock. She is, she is, Mr. President, what Fannie Lou Hamer would call a woman's woman and a sister's sister, just like we often hear people refer to men as being a man's man. Maria, you have motivated, inspired and encouraged a number of not just women, because I heard men after they read the story, say that they were going home to talk to their wives and their daughters about this issue. And it would have never been on their minds had you not in such an authentic way spoken about your truth. So I want to say a sincere thank you to you for speaking your truth and always doing it, which is what I respect the most about you in a very authentic way. I also, Mr. President, just want to go back to what Councilmember Curtis Jones opened up with as we looked at these election results locally and nationally. People are tired of fancy rhetoric, they want to connect the work that we do to their daily lives. They want to see it, they want to taste it, they want to touch it, they want to feel it. And when they don't, we get what we just got. I'm not sure how many of you just saw the image that our commissioner Omar Sabir just posted, but he just gave us the results of turnout here in the city of Philadelphia. And we were at about eighteen point eight percent, eighteen point nine percent in the city. And it just affirms for us that we have so much more work to do, thank you so much, Mr. President, and appreciate you, Maria, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, before we call for adjournment, Councilwoman.
Council President, before you, sorry, I wasn't going to say, because I did want this to become about me, but I want to thank everyone. Councilwoman Bass talked about our conversation and some of the things you learned through this process, it'll be one in eight women who are touched by this, which means that the men in their lives will also be touched by this and their families, and it's so important. But Councilwoman Bass educated me on the lack of access or equity on the research money, right? So many of us raised money for this and the lack of investment in research to black and brown women. And when I get on the other side of this, I want to be the fierce advocate of that some of the really brave survivors that I met during, you know, October, October was a very difficult month for me. As I stated, I really wanted to wait till the end of this to talk about it, I haven't skipped a beat. If anything, you know, I'm going to be stronger because of this and more focused and more committed and more grateful for the time that I have and how I utilize my time. But you know, the work around this, there's a lot to be done. And when I saw that report by Donna Reed Miller, who used to be the one that sat next to me before Kenyatta Johnson, I was outraged, as you said, Council President, that in the richest country in the world, people have to make choices around medication. And so we still have a lot of work to do. As Jones said, the election proves that, you know, our messaging is off, we're not listening to people, people are outraged. And unfortunately, they're not getting motivated to vote, they're getting more apathetic and we have a lot of work to do. Twenty twenty-two is important, twenty twenty-three is important, and twenty twenty-four can really change the trajectory of this country. And we were having this wonderful intersection around racial equity and being able to talk about institutional racism and access in a different way. And the election results didn't show that we were all having the same conversation. So thank you very much, Council President, to all my colleagues, to all the well wishers, and kudos to the brave survivors, I hope to join the club soon, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Councilwoman, and to all that know you, we are not surprised how much of a fighter you are. I mean, you fight the party every four years, right? You fight the political naysayers every four years and you win, right? You fight the bad actors in your neighborhood, around our square, the park, all the things that, you know, folks want you and need you to do. I know that you used to fight your brothers growing up and I heard that you always came out victorious, right? That's just who you are, behind the scenes, you even fight me, right? As we discussed the various challenges in council and it's all good. So I know you will continue to fight and I just want to say how much I appreciate you, how much the city of Philadelphia should appreciate you and how much I love you for having known you way beyond us being colleagues. That we used to walk the halls on the fifth floor of City Hall as staffers, so we're with you, God bless you. You want to continue to do what we got to do for the city, thank you, Councilwoman. So with that, I'm going to recognize Councilman Jones for a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, I move that council stand adjourned until Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten A M. Second.
Thank you, it has been moved and second, that council stand adjourned for Thursday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-one at ten A M, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Ayes have it, motion carries, thank you all very much and please be safe, God bless you.